Hello, everyone. This is a special committee of the hall meeting. Thank you so much for attending. It is very special and the meeting is special and we've been looking forward to it. I'm Charlie Zelli and this is the council committee of the hall, May 29th. And we can call the meeting into order. We have graduated to what bigger metrics come home. How much means anything.
It is unclear as to how this showed up.
Okay, yeah, but it's here. But first, before we get into the agenda, which is really to address the transitway advancement policy and have a big discussion about that. We've had minutes from our May 15th committee of the hall meeting. And they were set out in advance. If there's any corrections, additions, speak now or the way to entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye, aye, oppose. And that counts as one vote. We've been looking for this meeting seriously and I think for a number of different reasons. I really appreciate everybody coming to both just get a grounding as to this policy that we adopted, might even be two years ago. But and also to kind of get an overview from our staff, in particular Leslie Cudares, Charles Karlsson, Nick Thompson. I will say just as an introduction, you know, the world has changed since we've adopted this policy. One is we have an abundant source of funding. And also we've advanced a number of projects in thinking, applying, being thoughtful about the transitway advancement policy. But now that these projects, and it's more than one, I don't really emphasize that. This isn't about the blue line, but it's about all the lines that would be coming forward. And I want to make sure we have a conversation, an understanding about what the policy means, how we use it and where we might inform us our thinking as we advance really a pretty robust network of transit. And between now and 2030, or you name it, that map, I always say is no longer an aspiration. It's actually a defined plan that has funding and projects and partners behind them. So let's start and invite Leslie, Nick and Charles to the table who need an introduction. I will say that there's that we're going to kind of get a kind of an overview. And this is really to set up a conversation, not to be like we often do when we get just information. But what I've heard from many of you is please give us a time to have generative thinking, because we've got to put a lot into our heads, hear from each other, talk to staff, hear what they have to say, give some direction to staff and do that before we're actually faced with a major decision. I mean, this is not where we want to have policies come to us and now we'll have to take a vote. This is way well enough in advance. This is not a new subject, but it's one that we can at least kind of chew on. And then the other piece is that I don't want to point out is that we're, this is going to be coming in three sections. We have three presenters, three sections. So ask while they're making these presentations, if you want a clarifying question during these, while we present them, please feel free to raise your hand or jump in. But I don't want to get bogged into a conversation with the first presentation and leave the second or third short. So this is just a thought, but I think let's give them space and oxygen to hear these presentations. We can go back, but let's see time for a discussion after they've had a chance to present. Is that fair?
Yep.
All right, with that, welcome, Leslie.
Well, Chair Zelli, council members, good afternoon and thank you for being willing to meet today. I recognize this is the fifth Wednesday of the month and a beautiful afternoon and just really appreciate your willingness to make time for this today. So I'm going to provide a brief introduction and hand it over to Executive Director Carlson to cover the first part of today's presentation. But as the chair shared with you already, the purpose of today is really to discuss the general approach to transitway advancement so we can develop a deeper understanding of how to really bring information to you and make sure that as we're preparing for future discussions that are going to be transitway specific, that today is really about identifying those principles and understanding those expectations. So when those items do come your way, they're complete and ready for your discussion and deliberation. Today's presentation is going to happen in three parts. First, Executive Director Carlson will review the transitway advancement policy that the council adopted in late 2022. We recognize in this that the transitway advancement policy is an important piece of looking at transitways and transitway advancement deliberation. It's not the only piece and part of what I think we'll hear from you today is other considerations and other information you want to make sure is brought forward that might not be explicitly called out in that policy. And then the second part of today's presentation is talking about some changes that have occurred since that adoption in 2022. So Nick will, Deputy General Manager Thompson will outline some of those changes as well as provide some specific information about transitway discussions and decisions that will be coming your way this year. And then the third piece of this, I will share some of what we've heard so far. You might recall earlier in May, I sent out an email to you all seeking some feedback about what information we would want as part of transitway deliberation, discussion, decisions. So we gathered that, have some information to share with you today, but really want to give time to hear from you, see if we're kind of on the right track, hitting the mark, what's missing and so forth. Before I turn it over to Executive Director Carlson, I also want to mention that this conversation and the conversation about the transitway advancement policy fits into this broader context or kind of constellation of decisions that the council will be making in the upcoming months. So for example, later this summer, we will be bringing to you an updated 30-year financial forecast for transit. You might recall last fall, we brought the first 30-year financial forecast that included sales tax revenue projections as well as expense assumptions. We're in the process of updating that and plan to provide that to you this summer. So you have that information available to you. Staff are preparing to support council members through developing sales tax use policy this summer as well to really guide how sales taxes allocated and invested for the region. And obviously, the regional development guide work is underway right now as well, including the development of the 2050 transportation policy plan and already thinking ahead to some amendments that will be made to that plan as well. So that's a long way of just saying today is a piece of this much broader set of conversations and we hope it'll be a useful piece, but in itself it's not complete and just want to name that at the outset. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Carlson.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair and the General Manager for the introduction. I will describe the existing policy, but I think first we'll begin with the transitway system. What is the significance of the system? This map shows the transitways that comprise our regional vision for a 2030 network of transitways. And then the list on the left shows the existing lines and those set to open next year, including three opening next year and several beyond that. So metro lines provide high-capacity, frequent and all-day regional transit service. A robust and interconnected network of transitways is and will be the foundational element of the regional transit system, both in terms of use and in terms of investment. Transitway investments are permanent and long-range. They require diligent planning to best serve the existing developed region and to help guide future development in the region. They're the products of significant partnership led by the council with federal, state and local governments. Stations along transitways are permanent investments and this permanent plays a strong role in the ability of transitways to focus future growth and act as a catalyst for development across the region. Stations help cities shape their land use. They guide council investment in TOD and through other programs and present opportunities to advance community visions for investment, economic development, support strategies to provide equitable development, community wealth building and to address market pressures that can lead to displacement. So transitways are a significant part of the transportation system, particularly the transit system. Recognizing a variety of financial and other pressures regarding transitway investment, in late November 2022, at a special meeting of the council, the council adopted policy RF17, which is linked in the agenda today and is a couple pages long, but summarized here. So really reflecting the two roles that the council plays with regard to advancing transitway projects. First, as the region's Metropolitan Planning Organization, or MPO, the council manages the region's long-range transportation plan. In that role, we require and compare information on key aspects of the transitway to standards established in our plan. So that occurs when we're advancing changes to the region's transportation plan. In another role, the council serves as the governing body for the board of Metro Transit at MTS as the transit providers of the council. So at the point that Metro Transit is implementing a transitway, the council and local project sponsors develop a risk register, establish roles and responsibilities that address risks in projects and then reflect those roles and responsibilities in agreements. And so these are the kind of the two foundational points of the transit policy that the council adopted in 2022. The application of this is described in this slide. So the policy applies really under two scenarios. One is the MPO, and that's reflected in the blue arrow when plan amendment or adoption is considered. And then also in green, when the council's considering a project phase agreement for a transitway project, acting as the governing board for the agency. There are multiple decision points and these are kind of shown in red on this slide, just as an example. Many council actions occur to advance transitway projects. Not all of them are actions that the policy applies to. So the council may authorize engineering contracts, real estate purchases, construction phase contracts. These all individually can sometimes feel incremental, but cumulatively are really a significant body of work that the council does with regard to advancing a project. But under the policy, it's not every single step of every single project that we apply the policy. It's the what's shown in green arrows as the major project phase milestones where agreements set forth the roles and responsibilities for the subsequent project phase. In an upcoming slide, we'll detail several changes that have occurred since 2022. One is reflected on this slide. As a result of state law changes in 2023 and new funding from that change, the council is solely responsible for operations and maintenance of projects. So there are no longer project phase funding agreements for operations. It's really the capital development that this would apply to and operations are on the council's behalf. I'll conclude part one by sharing how the advancement policy has been incorporated into the region's long-range transportation plan, really the MPO or metropolitan planning side of the equation. Last June, the council approved an administrative modification to the plan that reflects information that we require to add or amend a project in the region's long-range plan. These items were largely in place. They were, nothing was really new in terms of what we require, but we did formalize this as an expectation to be clear about what the council was looking for. And there's four areas of this. First, to document the planning process and the characteristics of the project. So the mode, the alignment, the station locations, what is the information about the project itself? Resolutions of support from affected governments. The council has expected uniform support from local communities for a project to be added to the plan. That's a longstanding practice. This is in part because stations along these lines focus future growth and they act as a catalyst for development, as I mentioned earlier. Because cities have authority over the land use around stations, local support is really critical to achieving regional objectives and, you know, making these investments in transportation lines around the region. Next area is documentation of fiscal constraint. Federal law requires that the council's plan be bound by available financial resources. So details of how a project is proposed to be funded in its construction, operation and long-term maintenance is a critical input to our planning process so that we can evaluate it against the financial capacity of the region and test the assumptions used or proposed, particularly through locally sponsored projects for how a project will be funded, not just in its initial construction, but over the long term. And then finally, public engagement and feedback. An inclusive process to engage the public on project details is, thankfully, really a fundamental expectation region-wide and that's reflected in our plan and our expectations as well. So documentation of that process is something that we expect. The next transportation plan, the one that's upcoming and that we discussed at the previous meeting, also describes major trends in the transit system that transitway projects are both affect and are affected by, including ongoing ridership and service recovery, regional development around transit, decarbonization of the transportation system and important workforce topics. And so several of these will be addressed further in the upcoming slides, but I wanted to mention them here because, you know, these are issues that we describe and reflect in the new plan and are important topics as we consider not just advancing individual projects, but how the system works together. So I wanted to include that here. Since we've adopted the policy, many of the underlying risks and conditions facing the region have changed and Nick Thompson will address these in part two.
So we thought we'd set the context of where we were when this policy was adopted. Several of you as council members were not council members at the time. And so I wanted to set that context and also talk about all the changes that have occurred since then. When this policy was being developed in fall of 2022, we had several projects that were facing some resistance for their current design. We were in the middle of changing our route for the line extension. Purple Line at that point was, had some communities that were changing their support for the project. That was at the time when the Green Line extension was, we had identified a significant need for increased budget, a change in the budget, and we did not have a path forward or a solution that would be now for how we were going to fund that project and with that project. The project was still facing significant construction at that time in 2022 as the canal tunnel was, had been paused because of design challenges and construction challenges. And so there were just a lot facing the actual projects themselves. And then we had no plan identified for how we were going to maintain these projects in the long term. We didn't have a funding source for that. And as a council, you were starting to see these projects come online and a lot in the pipeline and starting to understand that what is 20 years from now when that vision is complete? We have to start replacing and pairing bridges and driveways and LRV vehicles. What is the plan that was really undefined at that time? We, that was pre-legislative session where the funding was resolved and so we had significant fiscal challenges overall for transit at that time. And so planning for capital maintenance was just not in place at the time. So a lot of context for why this policy was created that was about what was occurring at that time. And then, you know, we started to forecast that we were having staffing challenges. We were having difficult call time post-COVID recruiting and we were beginning to forecast how many new FTEs were going to be needed as we presented last December to the council about that forecast of growth in staffing for all phases to operate the systems we're building. It was, the magnitude of that was becoming clear. And so significant risks were on the table around these transitways and knowing that we had some more projects coming up where some major decisions were about to be made. The good news is a lot has changed for the better since that time. We know, and I, the regional sales tax, which we were forecasting and will talk more about it later this summer, that can cover the operating and capital maintenance costs of what we are planning in that region for the long term. We have clear responsibilities defined now between our local funding partners and council about the different phases of the project. Metropolitan Council now is responsible for these projects for the cost once they go into operations. Prior to that, you know, we had a debate about capital funding for some of the projects. ABRT is always a little bit of a separate discussion when you talk about capital funding. But we had also challenges prior before where the operating cost was supposed to be shared 50/50 with our local funding partners. And we were seeing that trend diverge from a 50/50 cost share at the time of 2022. Now we have clear goals that the local funders are not involved in the operating cost. That is a responsibility of the council, which has its other benefits of the council then gets to set all the operating parameters of these systems. We were facing some safety challenges at that time and we had been seeking expansion of our responsibilities in safety with the legislative changes last year. We now have the ability to have administrative findings. We have trip agents. We have a very different approach to safety that has been enabled legislatively and for other reasons compared to where we were at in 2022 and very limited options at that time. Just in the past few weeks, new legislation has further defined that the regional sales tax cannot be used for capital on light rail. And so that further clarifies where we're at, provides some certainty about our role in funding of projects, including Blue Line extension and possibly River View. As you all know, we have new labor agreements, not fully completed, but with ATU that has really kind of changed our hiring and retention dynamic for the positive, which is great in terms of not just our current operations, but what we're planning to build with our metro lines. And in 20, since 2022, we've had three years of double-digit ridership growth. And so our ridership is rebounding, particularly around metro transitways, all-day frequent service. And so strong, we're starting to recover and that ridership growth. And so where we're at in '22, that was a much less certain of where ridership was going to go. So good positive trends there. On the project side, a lot of progress has occurred there too. We, this summer, we're going out to ask communities for support for our selection of a potential new route for Purple Line. We've also truncated that project to Maplewood from White Bear Lake. If the community and the CMC supports the new Purple Line alignment, that would be adopted this fall and it's getting strong positive reception from the community. The Blue Line extension this summer will be seeking support for its new alignment. And so made tremendous progress on kind of defining that project in a much better way than we were in 2022. Green Line and Funding Extension, we have resolved the funding, how we're going to fund and complete that project and advance that project. We are now at 83% completion on construction and a great construction here last year in winter. Some great progress there that we really are confident in holding in 2027. And we will be adopting its final new budget later this year. And so we have a funded budget there, which is a strong, strong signal for how we should develop. We, with Blue Line extension last fall, we had a really strong discussion about how do we govern these projects with our local partners? And we adopted a completely new model for governance called Project Decision Board. That has been going well, I would say, with the project and I think we had a strong debate here. But it's a better, it's appearing to be a stronger model where the council has a stronger say on key decisions on a project. And that model, we look to be moving to Purple Line later this summer too. And so I think we've got a different governance approach to the projects, which involves the council on a stronger role than they had before. For Blue Line extension, one of the requests of the community was that there's a strong parallel anti-displacement function along with what we, how we traditionally develop a project. And the state came forward with new funding for that, which was a critical piece of one of the main pieces, which aligns with council goals also in terms of how your 2050 vision around anti-displacement. And then progress on construction is always good. We have four transitways in construction where we were compared to 2022. Gold Line will reach substantial completion later in October of this year. We've set an open date, much stronger certainty around Gold Line. Our two B Line and E Lines, we've now led all the contracts, so we have certainty around those projects which are in construction about what they're going to cost. They're within budget. And then the Green Line has just made, as I mentioned, strong progress. So a lot of progress where we had a lot of risk in construction on several projects. So what is upcoming related to this policy and specific transitways? I'll talk just briefly through four transitways which we believe in 2024, the policy could apply to. First is Blue Line extension. There's, it's going to be a busy summer for Blue Line extension and we'll be at the council later talking about this project. The first item that will occur is our release of the draft supplemental environment impact statement. That will contain a lot of new information, a lot of information that has been requested by this council and others that we will be able to start talking about as soon as June. We believe it will be released on June 14th. And so we plan to come before the Transportation Committee as an information item on June 24th to present the information that's in there. And it's in a public comment period. So that's one piece of critical information to understand whether, to get some So that's one piece of critical information to understand whether to get support for advancing the line. The second step is we are going to want to provide a comprehensive overview of the Blue Line project, Blue Line Extension project to the council. And so we will be doing that at the July 8 meeting is our current schedule for that. That's going to project history, project cost, project design, just the what we're planning, proposing to build on that project.
Sue. Just a clarification, Nick. July 8 is the date of a Transportation Committee meeting and all council members are going to be invited?
Chair and Councilmember, correct, yes. It is an information item, not a business item.
Right. Okay, so we should all have that on our calendars.
The council member.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of items in the discussion will send it out whether we have a council meeting that will be followed by a short Transportation Committee or something like that. We'll likely have it here so it's accessible versus at Haywood where a Transportation Committee typically meets the second half of the year. But we're working through what that looks like over the next couple of weeks. We'll make sure it gets out to everybody so it's on everyone's calendar. So I would block off three to six on the eighth and we'll let you know what that really looks like.
This is under active consideration.
Correct.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I had a note on that too. And I know we brought it up in our work group, but so on that date, three to six, maybe short Transportation Committee meeting and then getting into a council the whole type setting? Is that what we're thinking of with Blue Line as the only item left with the council?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I believe the intention is to have the council meeting first. We do have a couple of items that we need to advance for Transportation Committee. So we'll probably have a short session after that as kind of what we've been talking about to date. But the topic of the meeting will be on the Blue Line.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Yep. And then that that sets up well because basically we're going to provide a full set of information before we ask you for an action, which is advancing the project. So that action is to authorize the beginning of the municipal consent process for the Blue Line Extension. And so that requires council to take action to for the for the public hearing for municipal consent. The municipal consent process is a process where the council asks and have become a regional rail, asks the communities along the corridor whether they provide support for the design, the location of the stations. And the step in that is that the council holds public hearings. And so the business item will be to authorize that public hearing with the Hepburn. And so that's that's the action. Now, at the end of the municipal consent process, that's more information the council will have of the project. You will then have information about each of the cities along the corridor, whether they've provided municipal consent or if they've added conditions to the project. So it's that process of asking the communities and actually asking Haver County also for their consent in that process. So that municipal consent process will start with our with the council action on July 24. And we anticipate that being completed in early October based on the schedule of statutory schedule for municipal consent process. Now, assuming that the project progresses on the new alignment that is being proposed for municipal consent process, that does require a TPP amendment because you're revising the alignment. And so as you'll see in a couple of slides here, there's a few TPP amendments related to transitways. We're going to try to group them together. And the process for that amendment will start right after you adopt 2050 TPP. And so we'll start the TPP amendment process in February for Blue Line, assuming for Purple Line if there's a new alignment there, so.
Just and I so we can cut back if we have questions on the slides, you can keep going, right?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
The other transitway that has upcoming actions is the Purple Line. So we'll be asking you this summer to amend the capital grant agreement for that. That's where we can bring in the new governance model. We'll also be amending for cost for bringing in a significant additional funding to the capital grant agreement with the new alignment. That's a lot of new scope that we've added to that project. So the county needs to we need to have an increase in the cost or increasing funding from the county. So we'll be bringing that. And so that's an agreement that I would say is advancing the project. Now, assuming we amend the route, that again will have a TPP amendment. So that will go with Blue Line TPP amendment. So if you remember that chart, that chart is not linear. Essentially, we will be going back to the planning process for these new projects to amend it in the TPP. It generally TPP amendment takes roughly six months. And so that's why I had mentioned it as beginning in February. G Line, we when the policy was adopted, though my council leads the planning of our T R T, the funding is different than our LRT and dedicated BRT lines. We did say the policy would apply to ABRT projects. They have different steps in there than like leg rail projects. And so we consider the final advancement step of ABRT, the council's adoption of the corridor plan. Because after this corridor plan is adopted, often an ABRT is built by multiple projects, some of which are not led by the council. And so, for example, the G Line will be built by four different agencies. And so they need certainty that they can build the scope. And so the certainty is provided by the council adopting the corridor plan. And that will occur with the release of a public comment period and the final adoption in October. It's sort of the final step of the advancement policy for ABRT. And this is the G Line this year, but ABRT, each ABRT has its own corridor plan adopted. And then lastly, River View, I put this on here because River View is possibly advancing this year, but this is not council's project. This is a project led by Ramsey County. It is reflected in the TPP. Ramsey County has indicated, is currently has the project out for public review and comment on two mode alternatives, the streetcar and a BRT. They will be coming and presenting to the Transportation Committee sometime this summer as anticipated, information about the modes. But the current step is that the Policy Advisory Committee for this project, which is Ramsey County's Policy Advisory Committee, will be voting on which mode advances for River View. And the council has members assigned to the Policy Advisory Committee. So technically, that is a transitway advancing, but it's a little bit, it's definitely a different because we're not the current way of the lead agency. And so but that is occurring this year. And obviously, the council wants to weigh in, weigh in on the mode selection as a member of the Policy Advisory Committee. These are all tentative dates for the review of subject change. So. Last part.
So this is the final part before we conclude our presentation and provide time for you to discuss and provide feedback to us. I want to start by just acknowledging that as staff, we have been listening to you and receiving feedback as it relates to applying the transitway advancement policy, even before it was adopted in 2022. So I want to acknowledge we we have been listening over the last couple of years as the council gains more experience applying this policy. And today's conversation is meant to continue to build on that, just in that spirit of learning and continuous improvement and wanting to refine how we do this. And as Deputy General Manager Thompson described, we also recognize many circumstances have changed since the policy was initially adopted. Based on what we heard thus far, and again, much of this comes from feedback we received via email to in response to my early May email, as well as conversation in the Transit Policy Work Group. Some of the key pieces that we are hearing you all want information on as you're discussing and making decisions on transitways include having that full history of the project, its mode, its alignment, anticipated timelines, workforce. And I'll talk a little bit more about workforce in a moment, building on what Nick previously shared. But understanding the importance of looking at that future workforce need and what support is going to be needed to operate and maintain projects, not just within Metro Transit, but the implications for the entire Metropolitan Council enterprise. Economic development impacts along the planned corridor and displacement impacts of the final project both the final project as well as during that construction phase. The financial plan for building, operating and maintaining each transitway and how the transitway advancement policy applies during these decisions, including the implications of each decision and vote. So the next couple of slides in some ways repeat some of what Nick shared, but just wanted to provide some background on some of these key considerations that had been named as important to feed these conversations and decisions on transitways. First, in terms of ridership, as we've previously reported, ridership continues to grow. In 2023, ridership was about 16% higher than it was in 2022. In 2023, we ended the year just short of providing 45 million rides. In 2019, by comparison, the last full calendar year before COVID, we had delivered just shy of some of the 8 million rides. So we're not, we're hovering right around that 60% mark of our pre-COVID ridership system wide. I will say in the first quarter of this year, we had higher ridership than the first quarter of last year. So that's surprising to see as well. As Nick mentioned, ridership in quarters with fast, frequent, all day service has been more resilient ridership loss during the COVID era. In this slide, and I know it's kind of a lot of information on that line graph, but what it's sharing with you is average weekday ridership, and it's broken out by different types of transit. So the purple line on there is core local bus average weekday ridership. The orange line on there is LRT average daily ridership, weekday ridership, I should say. And red is bus rapid transit average weekday ridership. So just to give you a sense that, you know, when we talk in system wide averages, it sometimes doesn't capture that, you know, that fast, frequent, all day service continues to perform well and is seeing growth. I'll also mention that the University of Minnesota's Center for Transportation Studies has a study underway that was mandated by the legislature to really dig into the impacts of COVID on transit ridership as well as forecast future trends. So we are participating and providing information for that study and anticipate it'll be complete later this year. So that will be another good source of information as it pertains to ridership. The Transportation Committee too has previously seen a presentation on the 2022 Travel Behavior Inventory Transit Onboard Survey that provides some additional insight into travel behavior. For example, we know that the share of rides that are commute rides has declined while the share of rides that are for air and some shopping has increased. So we're, you know, looking at that information too as we continue to look forward to the U of M study. And finally, I should mention, and it's not really called out on this slide, but you know, while this is about ridership generally, as part of the process of advancing transitways, the projects also develop ridership forecasts. Those ridership forecasts are really guided by FTA guidance. New ridership forecast produced for this year will be based on 2023 ridership as a base and forecast for 2045. And going forward, forecasts will be post-COVID trend forecasts. And it's important to note that ridership is one component of how the FTA evaluates a project. The FTA also looks at factors about who's being served. For example, looking at income, zero car households and so forth. So we expect the new FTA guidance will be finalized this year and our projects will follow the guidance for valuation of eligibility for federal funding in the capital investment grant program. Another consideration that has come up through these conversations of transitway advancement is relating to council workforce. And as Nick mentioned, back in December, we came before you to talk both about our current vacancy rates as well as how we're forecasting the need to grow our workforce. Again, not only at Metro Transit, but also recognizing regional administration needs to grow to support transit needs, and that has implications enterprise wide. I will note, right now, we have about 400 open positions of nearly 3,500 total budgeted positions. And the good news is we are seeing an uptick in applications. Earlier this year, the council ratified the ATU contract, which raised wages for many of our frontline workers. So that, I believe, is helping feed this increasing interest in positions and and we're glad to see that trend. I'll also mention, since we presented to you in December on workforce, we have formed in close partnership with Human Resources, the Metro Transit Workforce Task Force. And this is a new table that we formed that brings together Metro Transit and Human Resources leadership to develop and implement a unified strategy to recruit, retain and develop our employees. And part of that task force work is helping us really kind of get a better, more firmer sense of estimates needed in terms of FTE growth as we bring on these additional transitways. I will mention, we know we need to plan ahead for these. And in the next quarter, budget amendment that will be coming in front of you before the end of this quarter. We're already adding some additional positions to our budget to support Blue Line Extension coming on. So we're already starting the process of budgeting for and hiring additional positions for our expanding transitway system. Another consideration that has been raised by council members and certainly is raised in communities that are planning and seeing the development of transitways is public safety on transit. The good news is reported crime in the first quarter of this year was lower than reported crime in the first quarter of last year. At the same time, ridership was growing. And we've put a lot of effort, and this relates to our workforce slide as well, into expanding the layers of official visible presence on our system. This is a core tenet of the Safety and Security Action Plan. So within the last year or so, we've added supplemental security officers at key locations. With the passage of the Transit Rider Investment Program last year by the legislature, we've been able to develop administrative citations for fare noncompliance. That means our community service officers who are not sworn personnel are able to inspect fares and issue tickets at the end back in December. And in February, we brought on the first batch of Transit Rider Investment Program or trip agents to also take on that fair inspection duty as well as be trained in providing customer assistance and really being a welcoming presence on our system. And before the end of this month, we will be posting for our first in-house cohort of trip agents. Currently, trip agents are covered under our contract with Alec Universal Security. And so we're looking forward to hiring the next cohort and bringing them into Metro Transit. So that work is starting yet this month. And the Transit Service Intervention Project, another piece of the transportation bill last year, has brought another layer of presence to our system. We have 10 community-based organizations under contract who are providing outreach and connecting people to resources on light rail. But I would be remiss if I didn't say our police department is still facing challenges relating to a really significant officer shortage. I actually have a mistake on this slide. We have 104 full-time officers, not 105. And so that's a significant significantly lower than what we believe we need to fully realize our public safety strategies on the system. So this is the final slide, and these questions may sound familiar because they're largely what I sent out earlier this month. But really want, again, thank you for making time for this today and hear from you. Are we, does it seem like we're on the right track as we're thinking broadly about how we will be assembling information and preparing to bring new specific transitway items in the coming months? So you're welcome to answer these questions or share, you know, other thoughts or feedback with us. But again, just really interested in continuing to refine how we bring these items to you.
Well, thank you, all three of you. Unless we honestly, that's a great overview. And when you think about November 22, the world has changed. And yet we're facing more opportunity and more reasons why this policy is becoming very real. Before we open it up, I'm wondering if Chair Barber has been living this, you know, as transportation chair for I don't know how many administrations, but at least.
Ever.
I know. But at least over the past couple of years, been thinking about this transit event and policy. So maybe for just your observation and thoughts and maybe kind of set us up.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I do appreciate that. And I just pride, feel like all these guys, thank you, great presentation, appreciate all the information. You know, some of the things I just want to put in context, and at the end of 2022, this was a different time. And at that time, we had few ways to guide externally developed projects. We took on all the risk and all the. We took on all the risk and all the responsibility, but we had very little influence in, in what the project looked like and how it was actually rolled out. And so for our internal projects, like the ABRT case, we did because they were internally developed and internally managed, so we could see some of that. So we had a need for some sort of a framework or a policy. I still believe that we do need that, but now it is a different scenario. We've got different things that are also put into place that will help us actually have more of a role and influence in these projects as they go. You know, it's this policy, making sure we're doing this policy right. It's the project structure. Nick talked about the redesign of the product development or development board and some of those mechanisms internally to each project that helps us have a little more say in it. Sales tax policy, the transportation policy for two thousand and fifty, and also overall looking at the transitway vision. And I think that as we do that, we layer this as one piece of it. We need to figure out what piece this is and to figure out how best it captures a number of these things. Both, we've talked a lot about enterprise risks and different pieces like that. But what are the things that we feel need to be included in some of these projects that maybe have been lacking in the discussion from the past? But now we do have to revisit a little bit in the broader context. We, it is a different place now. I don't think it's, you know, this is a check-the-box kind of policy, and we have to make sure it's not that. But we also have to make sure that we're being reasonable and consistent with our partners so that they know what to expect as well. And then just a side note, as you saw with the different transitways that were being discussed, a lot of those things will be coming before Transportation Committee. First, whether the information items or business items, every council member is welcome to attend. I'd invite you all. You know, if it's something we're voting on, you can't vote on it, but you can come participate in the conversation, listen online, but for sure, anytime, you're perfectly welcome to come join us at Transportation Committee for some of these.
No, well, let's open it up, and I, and I am daunting, haunted by the list of serious conversations and decisions coming up this summer. So this is real-time kind of conversations.
Mr. Chair, just as far as our, the input you're looking for, should we do them by section, since they kind of had distinct, you know, so that we're not all over the place? Should we try to do that, or just kind of want to just wherever we land and?
Yeah, I think however you land, I mean, if you'd like to frame it as the first part and save it, I want to make sure we're, I know this is kind of opening it up, and it's grabbing a lot of information. But I, I fear kind of expecting any one session to make.
Yeah.
Because we have some good choices here. And, and you know, we'll continue. This isn't the end of our conversation, too. I, I mean, I want to kind of give people some thoughts that we're going to kind of think of some things afterwards, and we'll have opportunities with these information sessions and others as these, as these projects come forward. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, very quickly. Like, we did really want to roll this out, I think a number of us have had conversations, how this was an important part of the chair and the RA and myself and management committee chair and others, we needed to have this conversation. This will be a little bit challenging from the perspective of, we really want to keep it separate from projects. We have lots of discussions on individual projects coming down the road, which are very important conversations. But again, it's like, if we go down a rabbit hole in one particular project, it might sort of steer the conversation in one direction or another. So we're going to try and avoid that. Can't guarantee it, we all envision something in our head when we're thinking about these projects. It's this one or that one, or whatever experiences we have, but that is the goal of today.
Right.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and great, great job on the layout, too. A lot of conversation to get to the framing today, so I just appreciate that. I want to add one framing piece that could matter from the lens of, for an organization that's come from a land of scarcity in terms of how to manage even what you have within the confines of what they're, to a land in which sustainability is going to be a, that's going to be an underlying first principle that you're going to see when the sales tax use policy stuff comes forward is this proposal that we remain in fiscal sustainability moving forward. That'll be an ask of this body to support that. And so I'll preview that part confidently, saying it's an important underlying principle for anything we look at. The map that was shown earlier today on the transitway map, all of that within the context of that conversation, like, we shouldn't feel like you have to pick things on that map to fit within the context of sustainability moving forward. There will be policy conversations on additional coverage and operational frequency and all sorts of other really important parts for this body to weigh in on. How do you address areas in the region that don't show up on the map as a transitway? Absolutely part of the preliminary planning that we'll bring in front of you so you all feel like there's a way in which the entire region sees the value. I just wanted to move away from any potential concern around this policy somehow needs to preference something that you saw on that earlier map. That would be a false choice under the world that we're now living in. I'm really happy to just give you that data point as we go.
Great, thank you, great context. Councilmember Bebeto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a concern about how we, in our committee process and in our public engagement and communications process, are viewed by the public in terms of our role and responsibility as it relates to projects, transit projects. And increasingly, we're seeing citizens who are totally confused about how the process works, who's in charge, who's got authority. And I, I think we have to assume some responsibility for that confusion, and I think we need to clean it up. And I think that if counties and cities want to work with us on transit, they've got to clean it up, too, because it's just all too easy to blame them at council for whatever, whatever they want to blame us for. They, they master that incredibly. And whether it's remarks in a public presentation, whether it's press releases, whatever it is, I think we really need to be careful because many times I think we're leaving the impression that some of these are a done deal and a decision has been made and that we're charging forward, and folks are feeling left out of the process. I also would recommend that at our regular Met Council meetings, when we have folks get up and make remarks about a whole host of issues, but particularly about transit projects, that we have some sort of a fact sheet or background information that we give them. We, we never respond, so they come, they state their case, and they walk away, not knowing if we've even heard them. And I, I find that troubling. I spent much, a good chunk of my early career doing parent conferences. And the give and take during those conferences was critical. And I don't mean to simplify and use a terrible analogy, but I think the give and take with the public just isn't happening the way it needs to on transit. These are major financial investments. They change communities. Hopefully, more often than not, for the good, but for some, it feels as though it's not for the good, and they aren't feeling heard. So I would just ask that we do what we can to really clarify how this process works, who's in charge, and that we not confuse the process. I mean, I would guess that if you went out to most people along one of these particular lines where municipal consent will be coming up in a few months, they would tell you, well, the decision's already been made. And they wouldn't know what municipal consent is, and they wouldn't know what difference it makes. There's an election in November, three of the cities along that route have a number of seats up. I don't know that, that elections, the elections in those communities will change anything, but I do know, as it relates to the purple line, an election made a dramatic impact on the route for that, that project. So enough said, thank you.
Great point, thank you for that. And if, and if I may, just to respond, I think that is the frustrating issue, particularly with full council meetings, we have a public comment. I think there was one time I had to say that Lyndale is owned and managed by Hennepin County, and Hennepin Avenue is owned and reconstructed and managed by the seat of Minneapolis, just to clarify the fact. But there's always a danger of, we're actually not creating a give and take and a debate because having a debate in a public setting just sadly isn't what we're set up to do. But I appreciate the frustration and the idea of engagement and clarity, even when we have some ABRTs funded by, and actually delivered by, Nick, I think you said four different out of these four. So, so maybe this is, it's not just transitways that are advanced by counties, it's even so-called ABRTs. So I, I think that's a really good point, and how we clarify that as a public messaging. And maybe we need to do that with our partners, so I appreciate you.
Mr. Chair, if I could, you know, the other thing is, is is there a reality check with partners when we or they aren't listening to people and at least considering some options? Maybe the station shouldn't be here, maybe it should be somewhere else. It, it just seems like if we're in the planning stage, there shouldn't be such a rigidity about it. Why are we going through the, the public engagement if we're not saying, yeah, you might be right? Maybe we should locate, relocate that station. I, I, I don't know. I, the, the last thing I'll say, and I've said this before, but I'll go say it one more time, and then I really will shut up, but we talk about economic development, we also have to look at economic loss, and it happens. And it's, it's happening in my district right now. So I, and I don't think we cannot, I don't think we can ignore it and be credible as public officials.
Particularly disruption during construction, that's all.
Well, and the aftermath after. I mean, some don't survive.
I'm just, mine are very slide-specific. Because I've seen this presentation a few times, and I really, really am grateful because I can see that you've gone out and sought more input in tonight. Hopefully, if there is something on people's minds, get it in and add it so that it can be considered along the way. That's critical, I think, what you're really looking for here. Let me just jump to, well, first of all, the timeline of all of our meetings coming up this summer, so the eighth, and then the twenty-second and the twenty-fourth. All I'm just going to say is, if everybody can really try to get there. Because these, you know, some of our meetings, it's not critical, we just need forums, it's, you know, especially if it's in your district, yes, you should be there. But like, this is big stuff we're working on. So if, if, if there's a major disruption in council calendars on any of these dates, and we haven't gotten that, that to staff yet, we should be doing that. I would just say that, because it, it's just important that we are all there, if, if possible. In fact, the Transportation Committee meetings that Chair Barber's invited us to, if, if our community relations, Elias and Michael, could actually just send those dates to our calendars and we can accept or reject, I would really appreciate that. It just makes it easier for us to know when something is pending on your calendar. And I think it's a very great opportunity to sit there. You know, sometimes you have to listen to things a couple of times. You can hear the Transportation Committee asking their questions, they've done a good job, and it might just jog your memory by the time it comes then to the full council. So that's just some advice from somebody who's been doing this for a while, so that it feels, so you've got a lot of reference by the time we're really going to be making some, I think, important decisions to move things forward or not. And then, could somebody just tell me which four agencies there, there are on the Metro G line? I don't, I don't know, I'm just curious.
Nick, Nick.
I didn't even know we had that many doing a project, like, that's like spaghetti on the wall to me, so.
Well, we, Chair, council member, we hide this on the street.
Yeah.
That's the first one, that's City St. Paul and building Robert Street.
Okay.
Which is on Mendat Street currently.
Oh.
And they're building our stations. And then, so that here, Mendat is rebuilding Robert Street portion, and we'll build some of our stations in there. And then, so that, we will build a few stations. And then, in the northern part of G line will be Ramsey County, so.
Well, that sounds like fun. Okay. And then, on, just, you mentioned review, and that I think it was more in reference about Met Council now being on that policy committee. So could you just remind or let the council know, who, how many seats do we have on that committee? And who will be our reps on that as we start to really be part of governance and decision-making? Okay.
Chair, yeah, the customer, Carter, you're the membership, I forget if you have an alternate, but it's appointed, been appointed by the chair at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
And so that, the membership is made of county, city, hack, they were born in that, and then council.
That's awesome. And I'm just asking, because as we continue to be part of the decision-making process with a Met Council hat on, I think that is really good, and that we'll have different layers of responsibility in the processes. But I'm assuming that, you know, we've got our governance when it comes to the transitway advancement policy and the work we've done, but this is maybe something a little different built into that project itself. So I think it's great, I just was curious about that. Can you just?
I believe that try is ultimately helpful.
Are you, okay, that's great. Cool. And then, could we just look at slide number fifteen real quick? And my question on here was, oh, the one thing, and maybe it's wrapped into economic development, but I don't think so, because I get economic development. So Sue made the point of, of displacement and negative impacts as it relates to not only economic development, but the construction piece, which we've talked about in our group. So maybe just, again, notating that it's, you know, projects can last a long time, and it's just, I don't know, how you referenced that that's kind of buried in, maybe what you're talking about, economic development or placement there, to be more clear to the public. And then, where does, you know, the post-COVID travel, changes in travel patterns and the workforce behavior fit into these bullet points? Because that's something we've, we track it. So I'm just curious, you know, just to make, which is great. I just, don't you think it maybe just, I think, has a bullet point here somewhere?
Yeah, Chair, council member, Johnson, yeah, he does a good fix to this and.
Yeah, it's just one of those things where we talk about it so much that.
And it's a number of these points, I think that's a good point. You know, more frequent service has been doing fast because travel is more local.
Yes.
I mean, and, and some of those travel patterns are, are interesting and actually help our transit now, in this issue.
Yeah, and, and so, you know, first of all, we are optimists at the council, but we have to be realist, too. So just having that in there so that people know that this is something, as it relates to our advancement policy, that we are going to be watching good, bad, or indifferent, right? And, and especially as FTA is going to be telling us how to calculate a lot of this. But I think that for most of our transitways, the genesis of the local community was, hey, we've got rationale sitting here that really is, in our minds, dictating why there should be a corridor here. So I'll just own mine, Highway fifty-five, twenty years I've been hoping for that, but you got to, you got to prove it out. And we're in the proving out stage now, right? But even with COVID, things change, and we're not even a line. So I'm not really talking about it, but I'm just talking about generally, are those conditions still there that were the catalyst, I believe, that sustained to move projects forward? Because even on fifty-five, I'm telling people, we can't prove this thing out as much as we all want it. You know, we got to figure out what, what, what we do then, right? So I just put that out there as a thought. And then, on, I'll be quick, on slide sixteen. You know, I love data and slides. And so I just, going back to two thousand and fourteen, and I don't need an answer tonight, but if somebody could just circle back to me, why was there such a decline starting? And I probably got this in my first years on the council, but that was already five years ago. So in council years, that's a hundred years ago in my brain. But I'm just, I'm just curious about why, you know, there's certainly in LRT, it's going up, but in some of the others, it's just, you know, kind of studying that, of course, boom, COVID hits. So when we are coming back and we've got some good double-digit increases, you know, what, what are we trying to get to, is my point? Is it two thousand and nineteen post-COVID? Because two thousand and nineteen looks very different than two thousand and fourteen, and I don't know before two thousand and fourteen. So I'm not really looking for an answer tonight, but I'd just like to know, what are we shooting for? You know, and it changes, to your point, Chair, about ridership is changing on the different lines based on what people are doing. So I'd just like to know, where, where are we trying to get to in these variable lines that we're watching and, and monitoring? And how does that impact a project or the policy? So that was, I don't need anything tonight on that, but that's something to watch. And then, so, and I said this at probably in the Transitway workgroup, but for slide seventeen, um, why did this goes? Oh, so we talk about, maybe I'm on slide eighteen. Okay, so let's, yeah, let's just go to slide eighteen. So I just, again, I said this before, but, you know, we were very, very thrilled to be able to put our supplemental security contract in place because we knew we weren't done negotiating with ATU, and there were some issues we had to work out there, and I do agree. And I'm very thrilled that we're moving in a really good direction with ATU. So I'm very encouraged by when that contract comes up again, because that'll be a moment in time as Green Line Extension is coming on. So that's an important time, so we got to keep that relationship going, and I committed to that. Which, by the way, I'd still like to meet with the president, if somebody can help me get that meeting, I'd appreciate it. And then, however, if I remember correctly, coming through management, that supplemental security contract, I believe, was six million dollars. And then um, however, if I remember correctly, coming through management, that supplemental supplemental security contract, I believe, was six million dollars for two years. And somebody can correct me if I'm wrong on that. But what I'm saying is, this is good and it is working and it's helping me on our trip personnel. But I don't think that that was ever imagined that that was gonna be the permanent fix. But it might be a longer term fix than the two year contract than we authorized. And I think it's just important for us to know how are we, are we gonna continue to supplement? Or um, cause if if you add in that to what we're trying to bring on to ATU, cause we have, I don't think we've gotten there yet. It's it's just something I need to get in my head to wrap around, cause two years goes fast. We're already probably what's almost six months into this contract, so I just wanna be ready. If I, if I remember right, so.
I think they always considered the possibility of a blended force uh for quite a period of time, but as they.
Yeah. Chair is only Councilmember Johnson. So the the initial contract with Allied was for supplemental security at uh platforms and transit centers. We have it at seven locations right now. In December, the council authorized a contract amendment to add additional money to that contract uh for trip agent services as well as additional supplemental security. Maybe I should started by clarifying that piloting the use of contracted security was one of the action items in the safety and security action plan, realizing that's something many other transit agencies do. And it hadn't been something Metro Transit had previously done. And we wanted to test to see if that could be an additional tool in our public safety toolbox. So you know, I think you're correct that the um, well, actually later this year, uh, if we want to continue a supplemental security contract, we'll need to start the process of competitively procuring that again. It should, it goes until next April, um, but.
Okay.
So it, that's a a long way of saying, I think we wanted to test contracted security to see how that supplemented our efforts. Um, and I think we're learning a lot from that process and uh that will inform next steps in terms of the future of the.
And Mr. Chair, that's great, cause hopefully, obviously transportation will know about it, but even just for management to know how's it going? Because you know, just wanting to make sure that whatever we're doing is sustainable, right? And thank you for the thing that we don't have to look at the lines and the map, we've got mine. But just, I want that those, I think, expectations of committee members and council members to be met too, so that we fully understand how we're gonna keep moving this forward if we can't hire enough people to do some of the work we wanna do. Cause clearly, if we can have figured things out with ATU, I think trip personnel would go on, go under ATU or where I wanna get, I mean, I'm a route and long jump back up. So, but you know, hopefully you know where I'm going. And then um, and as far as, you know, um, our police department, it is not an easy time for police departments. We all know that. It is a horrible time for recruitment, we all know that. The pipeline isn't great, we all know that. Um, but we've gone backwards in a year. You know, we I think we're at one oh nine or maybe one eleven if we got that high and and now we're down to one oh four. And I'm not faulting anybody, but it's just super important that we're at about sixty percent of our authorized strength. And that authorized strength is this budget here. Add all those lines up and that budget's gonna have to increase and those bodies are gonna have to increase. And these are sworn personnel and that that's just PD, that's not civilian side either. So it's just something that I, you know, want us to be very mindful of because we've already had it, you've heard um budget amendments that are adding people now as we're moving further and deeper into these lines and and opening those things up. So somewhere, and the sales tax thing, which I carry in my brochure, thanks Ryan. And then I had a really great meeting with Cassandra um about the HR strategic plan, which I'm very thrilled about. Um, and I appreciate that you put in here that it's not only um our Metro Transit people, but we need IS and HR support. And so I missed an HR or an IS update. They're gonna give me kind of the lay of the land where we're at with IS hires and vacancies right now. Cause that underpins everything we do. And HR hasn't been where they need to be to fully support the um organization fully um in all of this recruitment efforts. So I just know that we're in twenty twenty four, but I know that coming in twenty twenty five, cause I've had a little bit of a preview, there will be a lot more positions that are going to be showing up in the twenty twenty five budget. And that includes regional administration. So we just have to know that when we look at how are we doing? We need to, how are we doing now? And then what I'm trying to get from staff is what is that forecast in twenty twenty six? How many do we need and how many do we need, you know, as we open up uh Green Line Extension? And then, and as they all come on, I wanna see the grid that helps us pace. And I know there's a dashboard and somebody still needs to fully get me into that dashboard and how I can get what I'm looking for here. Maybe it's not there, I don't know. But I think it's super important for policymakers to know how we're doing as a major employer to make sure that we've got all the people to fully support everything that we're committed to so that our customers and our partners also have their ma- um expectations managed and we come out successful. And we can get over this, you know, get the, you know, jump this wave and get on the other side of this stuff. So that's what I've been really hoping and I'm working on. And I know we've got new people that have come in place at the council now that are working on this. But it it really to me has to track with this transitway advancement policy. And I have full faith that we'll have a plan to get there, but we are hitting some major headwinds when it comes to home safety. We're doing some great work when it comes to bus operators and I'm really proud about that. And I see the ads for mechanics and I see the big bus, it was just about PD. I mean, I just am thrilled about all that. But we gotta get the butts in seats, no pun intended. So I just think that if we don't seriously track that, and I wanna do it in management, anybody can come to our meetings too, and certainly transportation, but it's more than just transit and Metro Transit, okay? So, and I'm not, and I'm, I want you all to know, this, I just want us to really, when we open a line, we are opening it with full confidence. Otherwise, if we have doubts that we can make some of these benchmarks, we need to be very clear about it in this advancement policy. And if if we can't make it, it doesn't mean that it's a no, but it it might need a new strategy. It might need a a a realignment of resources from something else, I don't know. Um, but we're so blessed that the legislature gave money to us, they just can't give us bodies. And so I just wanna be, that was my my moment tonight, that I just really wanted us to continue to really put that forefront. The money is one thing, but the people is just, they're more important than the money in a lot of ways. And I just wanna make sure we get there. And we have time, it's not all coming at us tomorrow. But that's why it's data, we should be able to project this stuff and have a margin and adjust along the way. But I think I am not confident yet, but I think if you just start helping us to figure out, you know, again, HR is is deep into strategic planning and trying to bring on new people just in HR to support different divisions, right? So that's all I had to say and that that's what that was all about on seventeen and eighteen.
Thank you, Councilmember, for your curiosity, your passion and holding us uh, you know, a station accountable. Did you have a little clarifying? And then Chi Li, I know you had your hand up some time ago, so I'll get back there, but uh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very quick kind of clarifying comments about the ridership trends. Um, the the graph we have here, um, I think it's important to really focus on twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen as sort of our baseline. Because if you look back to twenty fourteen, a couple of things, local reps were super high, but we also didn't have the Green Line. We also didn't have ADRTs. So you can see when you dig down into the data where some of those were expanding, some of the ridership. So sort of that sort of window in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen should be kind of our baseline. Knowing that there are changes, especially in commuter travel, which we know is likely gonna be persistent into the future. We just don't know what that implication is. We just have to figure out what that window is. But it's using tools like, like our ridership data, um, which we get at Transportation Committee every quarter, uh, the travel behavior inventory, some of those things that can help us actually get a feeling for who's riding, when they're riding, why they're riding. And then that helps us figure out the vision for the system. So, and then, thank you, Paula.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
And Mr. Chair, um, I don't know how, the question this is, but I wanna talk about some of the things that may not be on the the map, the lines. So for example, microtransit, um, you know, we, you know, it it came out as a pilot. At at what point does the, is the threshold across that becomes a regular thing that we do? Um, so things like that is really interesting to me. Because my cities, Old Dale and Woodbury are really excited about microtransit. And for them, I think it's in their vision and attitude, they they kind of see it as um kind of an auxiliary kind of program to help corral people into the future, um, go to line stations. And and so um, how does, in this overall framework, how do we think about these other programs that are not on the map?
Great question. We're gonna toss that to Regional Administrator and then.
I'm dying to have one.
And then General Manager, you can tell me how you.
Councilmember Lee, that's a great question, actually, because it's important in this dialogue. It gets at an earlier point that General Manager Kanderas was making about the overlapping components to what we're doing. So the transitway advancement policy is not meant to show the full regional transit vision for that we are building out. What it's meant to show is the transitway component of that vision with those lines on that map, which would be colored lines, metro lines and lettered lines, right, on the ABRT piece. All would fit under that title, um, letter. The local bus system is a part of the sales tax use policy visioning conversation that needs to happen. You don't see those pictures on there. The part about partnerships with our suburban providers doesn't show up on that map. Microtransit, as a part of that context, what doesn't show up on specifically the transitway advancement policy, but you will be seeing more about how do we want to set a vision and a strategy for how that fits with the sales tax use later this summer. And so this is all gonna come together as part of like a a tapestry by the time we get to the fall and have a broader vision around the future of the region. Microtransit will be a part of that vision. Um, but alongside this transitway advancement at the core of some of our busiest areas.
Yep.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And just uh, because this was a presentation at Transportation Committee, just in case there for awareness, um, yes, we had the microtransit pilot in Minneapolis, but we're extending it this winter to um, have a pilot in Roseville and Woodbury. So um, those are, a hot, a lot of that guided by some of the investments on the east side and knowing that there isn't as much local service that was part of why those things were, um, or will be stood up there.
And something I've learned is just called geographical equity. Councilmember Lee.
Right, thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, first of all, thank goodness we have this transit advancement policy in place. Uh, it is just, I can't believe we didn't have it in place before. It's just wonderful. Uh, I was trying to think about risks that we haven't already talked about. And you tell me if this is not a risk. Um, but I was looking at the jobs, thinking about the jobs that we currently have available. So very specific jobs like, uh, I wrote it down, signals technician, traction power maintainer. Um, we will have EV bus maintenance people. And is it a risk if we are relying on some of our local tech colleges to provide those employees to us? If all of a sudden, uh, five years from now, Dunn, Woody, since, you know, gosh, just not that much interest in uh traction power maintenance, we need to close down this program. And we're kind of like, well, gosh, what do we do now? Is that something that, we have all of these, we have eleven percent of our jobs are open right now. Four hundred out of three thousand five hundred. Police officers, we know we need those, operators, we know we need those. But the, uh, you see where I'm going, like these specific jobs, like that if we don't have them, like, man, that could really derail or out of EV maintenance people. Boy, we're in trouble.
Chair is all the councilmembers and Strom. You know, you're touching on exactly why we formed this Metro Transit Workforce Task Force is to make sure we have a unified approach and strategy to identify our workforce needs and make sure that we are understanding the labor markets and uh investing in developing the pipeline through partnerships with schools, through our own workforce development programs. So, you know, certainly in order to deliver on the vision this region has for transit, we need people. And that's why, you know, really making sure we are as strategic and effective on the workforce front as possible is is critical to this. Uh, but I do feel that, you know, close partnership with HR, we are building the structure to make sure we are on top of the potential risks that you're you're mentioning.
I don't, if I could just very quickly follow up by saying the phrase out there is electrify everyone, right? Electrify everyone, so everybody is gonna be looking for electricians, including us.
Electrician. Uh, Councilmember, you get a break.
Uh, thank you. I wanted to um piggyback on what uh Ryan had said about sustainability. And um how are we going to be tracking that, um, managing that, getting ahead of it? So we don't have a runaway system, so to speak. Um, and I'll just, you know, when do we, when are we gonna set up systems for intervention as we see things maybe not going the way we want them to go? And something like that should probably, that's maybe part of the risk conversation. But it also is something, um, just take a water analogy. You look at phosphorus and oxygen levels in a lake and you see the trends going down. Through history, you know that that lake has a potential of dying in twenty years. So you better do something now. So for all the money we're talking about and and all the issues associated with workforce and funding and supplies and and everything that might happen, and even though we have legislative money for dealing with it, it might not go as we think it's gonna go. So how are we going to just be ahead of the game on that and um set up a system for kind of tracking that and talking about that now as sooner rather than later? So we, if we think something's going off a cliff or even just making a downturn, how do we readjust? Um, in in real time, not afterwards. So that's just a suggestion.
And if I take your comment further, that the transit advancement policy doesn't lead to once in a lifetime decisions and that we never look at it again. I think exactly.
No, 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 and I understand that.
So, well, no, I.
But how are you looking at it?
I, and I, I really like this idea that we have to have a way that we will review and think about how are things going and not be blind to changing circumstances or that they didn't come out.
Yeah, yeah, so kind of a sustainable system for looking at the sustainability, so to speak.
Can I extend one piece? And there's two parts to the question. The one that the Chair and you just discussed, Councilmember, that's a good piece for consideration here as we take back and answer these questions on how, once something is in operation, do you ever think about the system piece to it and the dynamics? That's a, that's almost like adjacent to some of the these questions, that's helpful and that's not listed on these slides, so I'll take that there. On your other part about how you assessing all the different dynamics as you're going in, which this sort of applies to, I just go back to uh GM Kanderas' earlier piece about, and Deputy Director Thompson also raised it. The piece about this summer, as you see forecasting, you're gonna start to see better forecasting and that's gonna be a chance to have a better sense of what what is entailed within the forecast, both in terms of assumptions on the revenue side, but also assumptions on as things come online, what does that mean, what do they cost, et cetera? So that should be something you start seeing more of here in the months ahead.
Right, and then I guess the follow up would be, as you see things come online, what's the ripple effect for the other downstream effects or upstream effects for things that you wanna come online, but it may impact those?
Sure.
So that's the sustainability part is this, you've got a network of things that are on or connected. And so how are you all tracking all of those? So you're not kind of.
The unintended consequence.
The unintended consequences, thank you, Chair, that's exactly right.
Yeah, it's good, so I appreciate that.
Kind of process.
Yeah, so. Uh, Chair.
Briefly, so, and also, what, you know, we come to these inflection points where we're gonna be implementing the policy. But you know, data and information that will be rolled into the decision come also at different points, right? And so I think it's to Councilmember Ventos' point, just generally, um, you know, when ridership numbers come up or the EIS, you know, will will there, will that all just be then released at the council meeting? Or if, you know, the sequence of information is always a thing, right? Cause do we embargo some of it until the whole council can review it? Or partners need to know, we can't, you know, I, you know, stuff where, I don't know how that works. But I think that, I'm gonna call it wonky, but it's just real time information receiving and sharing. And then making sure that it's appropriately, you know, obviously going through transportation so that it can be applied. But sometimes information is coming and we aren't probably at that inflection point, right? You've gotta gather it and time it. So that's why we're doing the things the way, the lineup, I guess I'll call it, for, you know, July, um, which is, you know, I'm gonna be honest, that is, we all said it, it's a tight turnaround. And to me, it indicates moving forward, moving forward, moving forward, moving forward, moving forward. There might be a thing that this council says, well, timeout, we need more information. So I also wanna be realistic in. So, I also wanna be realistic in the timeline of when councils reviewing things so that we don't feel pressured to always move forward if in our one and a half hours we don't feel like we've sufficiently gotten information, questions asked. So, I just wanna, I always like to have a little bit of an off-ramp where we, you know, take that timeout and unfortunately, it didn't go well probably last fall, the way it went down, because we didn't really have the foresight of going, wait a minute, we might need just a little more time to absorb some of this. Good, bad, or indifferent, right? So, it's just a lot. So, I would just caution that while we've got a calendar that's very important because it's about partners, it's about advancing, it's about managing the transportation agenda, which is always full. It just also shouldn't, I don't believe it should be messaging that council's just kind of on autopilot here. There's a lot of things that, every one of these projects coming forward is different. And that's, that's the thing, you know, you've gotta get your head around all, all the differences. So, if one of these projects is in your own district, you're probably more astute or going to the corridor management, and not all of us are, and we gotta be all ready to vote on this. So, I just caution against, here's the plan, and then we're gonna move it forward, and then we're gonna move it forward, and then we're gonna move it forward, well, there, there may or may not be a moving forward. Or there may be, we need more time. And I think that's important for a governing body to not get in the way of staff, but to do our part of the deliberations and decision-making so that when we do move forward, we are very confident in our decisions, so I just wanna put that out there.
And I think, Councilor Jesse, you're pointing out something that's important for us to consider. As much as we have a process and a policy, it's not a cookie cutter. Because every transit project is really different.
Yes.
And, and we know that, and we, we, that's why we're, there's seventeen of us, not, you know, three, I mean, we're just. She has that?
Very, very quickly, I could, so you, all of you see kind of the schedule that's coming up. And there's going to be times where there's places that we can have all of the conversation and have it all publicly. Sometimes it'll be a public comment period, and then we may have limitations in that what we can talk about. So, my request to all of you, you have questions? This crew here knows all the experts or are the experts. So, if you've got questions on specific projects, wanna understand, wanna understand even, you know, digging to numbers behind numbers, all of that, the resources are there, and I'm more than happy to answer questions, so.
And Mr. Chair, clarification, so municipal consent, because I've gone round and round on this thing, because I've read state law fifteen different ways, and Nick, you, you spoke at a council member, or a council meeting on it. And to Councilmember Ventos' point and to the point you've made at purple line, White Bear Lake, there was an election and they said, we are not part of this. And so, municipal consent, they weren't gonna do it, and, you know, we were able to say already and came up with the new thing, and all the cities now are on board. I would just say, though, we've also been told, I've been told, because I asked, like, Councilmember Barber, I asked, I've been asking the questions, right? And it's easier when there's a city at the end of the line that says, no. We will invariably, in all of these corridors, have cities all along the line, beginning, middle, and end. So, I will just say, on Highway fifty-five, I've got people on the fifty-five side of the corridor that are very concerned about Sixth Avenue and fifty-five and safety, and there's some really good work that they're doing. And then you've kind of got, you know, the Golden Valley section where there's some major improvements that have taken place around safety, and they're, but they're on board, and then Plymouth, but, you know, they're just very different points of view and, and depending on what happens, I don't know. So, I just am gonna say, I think, I think our cities need to really understand where their power does lie in municipal consent, because when they say, we do not support this project because A, B, C, and D, it is to give the governing body or the project body the opportunity to resolve those problems. The federal government, I think, put this in place because when major interstates were coming through and every little city along, and we said, no, we don't want it, well, for the greater good of everybody, it had to happen, right? So, we had to limit some of that local control, but it still required public process with those cities and essential municipal consent. However, I do know, and as a city official, that it, I don't know if they know, if they have the power to stop the project. I think there's different legal opinions on this, depending on city's attorney, city attorneys. I think there are different understandings, like, well, we can put our foot down and say, we don't want this project at all, like White Bear Lake did, but we could jut us in them, they were at the end. But if you're in the middle of the project, you have to take, play the gamble in their heads politically, right or wrong? Because I think that council comes with a real problem-solving ability, we are very earnest in our partnerships, we are above board in everything we're trying to do. But if that city doesn't believe it's gonna make a difference to just say, no, we don't want this here, so we have to head to our bet, we don't play, you know, ball, you know, put the ball down and walk away, then we don't have that much of a say in a transit station location or how something, you know, is decided on that might be more nuanced about the project. I've heard that from elected officials. So, I don't know what the real answer is, I don't know if, 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 you know, but I just think for local elected officials, for Met Council or Penopin County or Ramsey County or all the other counties, to be very clear about how this works for them and make sure that their city attorney folks know what the real answer is, because the real answer is, is not very clear out there. And if we're gonna be moving into municipal consent on any of these projects, they really need to know what it means for them, and they should not be acting out of fear, feeling like they have no say. And I know that some of them are, and we'll have elections, and we'll bunch of new people who don't probably know much about a lot of what's going on right now. So, I'm gonna really be a stickler on that, because I think you've said very clearly what it is, but I'm not sure it's being heard clearly. And again, a White Bear Lake versus a city in the middle, that's monkey for us, even at my council. I just wanna put that out there.
Yeah, it's different, Councilor Vento.
I'd like to clarify, it, I don't wanna sound like I'm mansplaining to you, but as it relates to the purple line, they had already had municipal consent when that election occurred and the city reversed its position. Further, the city of Maplewood had second thoughts, and there was a lot of tension, even after White Bear stepped out of the process and we reached an agreement, there was a lot of angst over the bike trail. And so, there was more to that, that, that really posed a challenge. And gratefully, Ramsey County created, they had, yeah, they had an epiphany and created a route that I think will be much improved. But that's an example of, you know, thank God it turned out the way it did, but that's an example of where we need to be able to pause and regroup. And, you know, it's still not finalized, and we don't wanna get into individual, individual projects. But I, I think the ability to either change a mode or change a route or whatever is just really crucial. And I think counties and cities need to know that we'll be partners in, in making appropriate changes. And I'm not sure they're convinced of that.
Thank you.
Other, uh?
Ditto, thank you, for all the emphasis on partnership. And on partnership and workforce, I'd like to just go back and reflect that when we're talking about our transitways, you know, it's really, really clear that we've got to have a workforce in order to support ourselves or our region moving forward and all of this transitway work. And we so often talk about what we have, you know, the force that we have, how many are missing from that force, and we're focused on what's happening right now and knowing that we need that force there. Well, those partnerships for workforce are very, very important, whether it be with unions or it could be with trade organizations, or if it would be with schools. And I really wanna talk about the schools piece in terms of our future workforce and ask for additional information as we hear back on all of these projects about not what we're doing on the projects for workforce, but what we're doing with the schools, our high schools. You know, how are we exposing young people in the high schools? We talk about our issues with LRT and young people acting up on LRT. And we have some great opportunities there that I'd like to hear about. Now, how are we investing in young people as young people on LRT? Not just in terms of their behavior and our codes, which are important, but in terms of their getting opportunities with us. How do we place young people on transit with responsibility regularly? And envision that as a part of our ongoing work and budgets? Because I think that's gonna be very important for very many reasons. And thank you for your answers right then. I didn't expect them right now.
Chairs, all the councilmember Carter, just really appreciate that comment. And in fact, the municipal administrator recently connected us with Ramsey County workforce, starting to get names, title wrong, but we recently had really encouraging conversation. And I think we are very interested in seeking out and fostering those partnerships. I mean, we had some earlier question too, I think that's part of how we, you know, mitigate the potential risk, but it's also a tremendous opportunity and part of really leveraging transit as an asset. So, I just think there's a lot of opportunity there, and I appreciate you raising that, and it's something we're looking at how we can do more on.
Thank you, and please continue to bring back those new innovations.
Also, Liligre.
Yeah, thanks, Chair, and thanks for presenting this. This is exciting to see this policy get up and running and figuring out how we're gonna use it. I appreciate all my colleagues' comments and the real, real bus discussion that we're having today. And just a couple, I'm trying to get to the, the questions here, but to, Councilmember Barber brought this up, the Councilmember Vento really elevated, and that's our transparency in the decision-making process. And I just use for the local communities, and I think that for my time on the Corridor Management Committee of the Blue Line, you know, we had to go back to community, communities that we had sort of switched, switched a script on several times. And hats off to project staff, to community engagement staff, we're really putting together understandable, transparent documents of who made what decisions, when, and where the authorities lie. And I thought that was so helpful. And I think that the progress that the Corridor Management Committee was able to make was based on a lot of transparency. It's sort of kind of to Councilmember Ventos' comments, you know, if we look at, we can't see it's the, the, how the policy applies to project-based agreements, so it's like five. And this also kind of goes to Councilmember Johnson's point about, you know, the council sort of being viewed as, as rubber stamping. But I think if we could sort of develop what further, what the contributing factors to each of those decision phases would be, so everyone can see them, and I'll note, and this is a minor graphic, but they're all thumbs up, right?
Yes, yes.
Where's the thumb, you know, what if, you know, on these factors, a different decision could be made?
Yes.
And I know we're moving into territory that is new for us, and this policy is, you know, could be viewed by some as being overly aggressive or a reason to say no, but there must be reasons to say no at some point. And so, I just feel like graphic, or representing that in our phased agreements would be helpful. And I guess your point, sure, where every project's different, right? But here's the considerations that would contribute to a thumbs up.
Yeah.
Here's considerations that may contribute to a thumbs down, then we're being transparent. And I had a lot of comments that people already said, so I will skip over there. But on slide fifteen, and you talk about, there's a list of, there's the reference to, these are the considerations that you've worked with so far, I can see a lot of all of our input incorporated in these. The displacement and anti-displacement efforts, I think, are particularly interesting. And from my term on the Blue Line Corridor Management Committee, when a lot of the anti-displacement work was getting launched, and one of the things, and I can't remember if it was our data or if it was sort of national data, but the planning of a transitway started to have, just started to cause displacement and have impact before a design was decided on, before a shovel was put in the ground. And so, we talk about impacts of the final project engineering construction. I'd be interested in knowing impacts of our planning processes on the communities along.
Harrison, maybe.
Yeah, right, right. So, so that's a comment there. And then on your questions, and it's about this, the risks and risk mitigation question. And I, I've said this a million times, but it's see the impacts across the entire enterprise and places that we might not, you know, we're talking about unintended consequences where we, and now that we have different and more revenues flowing, you know, that's, could be viewed as the answer to all of our prayers and all of our problems. And resources bring challenges and other risks. And so, I look forward to seeing that risk and risk mitigation discussion. But I'm really interested in the way you worded this question, because you said, what benefits do we want presented as part of the risk mitigation? And, and I don't know if we're just being too negative and we're not talking about benefits, or I'm just wondering what you're trying to get at with that question.
Yeah, Chairs, all the councilmember, I honestly don't remember. I think the idea was, but I mean, as I look at it, I think we recognize that there's a whole host of considerations and trade-offs. It was how do we make sure that we're providing as full a picture?
Sure.
And, yeah, so I think that was the intent, I agree, I have.
And I think if, if Councilmember Chalice were here, she would say, geez, this transit advancement policy can only be about the risk of the downside, but where are the outcome-based kind of ways of thinking? And because sometimes private sector's better at this, when there's a risk, there's reward.
Right.
It's worth taking the risk if there's.
Right, something like that, yeah, I like that very much, sort of risk in overall, so if you take this risk, you're gonna.
And what does it work?
Well, and, and I would just say, if, if there isn't a risk, we move it. So, it, you know, there will, there, we're doing this because presumably the benefits have been laid out, right? And so, I'm just, I, I think the whole, because I'm gonna, you know, because your voice is in my head around all of this too. Yes, these are important, and they are all to benefit the region, otherwise we're not doing them. And they have a lot of sub-benefits. And if we get to a point where we have to go, well, wait a minute, there's some things that are needing more attention, we can mitigate them and work them out and manage the risk and move it forward, or go, hey, we need more time, or we need to just reevaluate a relationship, or, I don't know, but I, I hope that it's, you know, these are moments where you have to go, oh, there's, there's a moment of trouble or a thing of concern, but it's not to say that there aren't benefits. So, let's just remember, this is all to benefit everyone in our region. And that, just by saying, hey, timeout, or hey, this is not working well for us, it is so that we don't risk the benefits we've already identified.
And I think this question was more about, let's not recite it, sometimes we need to quantify it.
Yes.
You know, not to assume that.
True. Cool, thank you.
Any, any other, Dr. Carter's?
Yeah, I just had two things, I was trying to get some clarity on. And this first one seems kind of obvious, but I still wanna maybe at some point get some understanding. The anti-displacement funding for Blue Line extension, just what specific line items or action items we're gonna be, go along with that? Because they can take many forms, and maybe it's, there's some obvious forms, but I just wanted to get an understanding of it. And, and the other one was, I wanted to get some insight into specific decarbonization of the transitway system. I have an idea around that, but I don't recall specific details of it, so I wanted to get some insight into that.
Chair, Councilor, I'll talk first of all, anti-displacement. And we'll bring you more detail when we give a full overview, I think that's a good topic to cover on, you know, on July eighth. But the state, or there's been, we've called a parallel process to the normal project development for Blue Line, anti-displacement effort, and it's covering the topic that, well, project can displace people, and so, what are the strategies to prevent that? And there's been, this summer, there'll be plans coming out that were comments on strategies. And many of those strategies require funding that is not eligible within the project. And so, the line, as the state did provide, stuffed up in by the ten million dollars for some of those strategies and a governance structure for those that will be kicking off next week. And so, that governance group will start out to find what those strategies are, what's invested in, in parallel to the project actually being developed. So, we can bring back more information about that, but it's a little bit in a sympathy too. But there'll be a lot of information around that, and that's tied to the Blue Line today, but we've heard, heard that, talked about all the transways, and you see it expanding.
That's what I was, I know there's a typical approach it could take, but I was just trying to get insight if something was being differently, was being done in, in regard to the Blue Line, or. or or is there like, you know?
Yeah, yes, Chair, Councilmember. It's definitely different, but I would say Blue Line's the first time we're gonna do it differently. It doesn't, it's not necessarily going to forever be limited to the line, that's where it's turning. And then a question on decarbonation, that's a good information we can provide also on the transit process. Uh so.
Uh Mr. Chair, if I could add that, Dr. Carter, thanks for the question. I mean, we referenced that in the transportation policy plan, recognizing that light rail lines are uh used electric propulsion and the BRT lines are areas where we have advanced uh bus system electrification on the C line and also piloting on the Oak line. And that as a a source of um of advancing a zero emission bus strategy in addition to the electric propulsion program.
And being a genetic bus guy, I will always point out, even with the diesel engine, the carbon per passenger mile is significantly less than it is for automobile, just having the density with one engine as opposed to. Just I'll throw that in, but helpful to have electric propulsion or zero emission. Chalice?
Yes, uh Mr. Chair, members, I, you know, after risk, it sounded like a broken record way too often. Um I did, I still see we have an opportunity, particularly in the workforce, to address equity across the board here. And I'm gonna talk about that Equity Advisory Committee, we have that and we've had some other uh some efforts in here. But if you look at today, the growing workforce is the diversity of people of color. I mean, that's and so we have an opportunity here to to design our programs, to work at it, to to benefit all of us. This is a great place to work. This is, you know, years ago, you know, working in a place like this. And just the other day, I noticed that the that that there was a hiring sign at the post office. You know, years ago, being and working at the post office was a big deal. And having all those benefits and I thought, wow, they're putting their sign out there. And so I think we we should put our sign out there as well. I don't wanna be the last bullet on PowerPoint every time I come here. But it's, I think we we uh we need to be mindful as we look at, we know there's a need. We know we have the ability to train. There was an example of that just the other day at the management committee where they they trained these folks to work on those electronic uh pay pay machines. And that was one, one guy who got the who got the the experience and was hired was a blackjack dealer. Another one had some electric uh engineering abilities. But so we have these things here, um we need, we know we need the need, we can do the niche kind of work. Um we can look at, you know, as I point out, there's Summit Academy, does some great work in construction and like, is there some things that we can put together in here and not not be so overwhelmed by or or it's just too easy to say equity, uh and then whatever the rest comes after.
And I think we've been engaged with some career pathways to really develop skills. Like you mentioned Summit, but also other areas.
So Mr. Chair, um I just wanna speak also on behalf and in support of Councilmember Pacheco. So since Councilmember Pacheco has been coming on, it's a regular management when we get our workforce reports about doing this thing. And I I the program that Councilmember Pacheco referenced, if you wanna look at a meeting for last the management committee, it was really inspirational. And we're testing things, but that one is proven. But we we need to be, we've been talking about this at least for the five years I've been on here. And Councilmember Pacheco has expertise and sits on management. And we keep asking and asking and it's not good enough to say, I think we have a program or we've got a little pilot that worked. Or, I mean, my goodness, we're the Met Council. We've got schools out there, whether it's Dunwoody, we talked about Dunwoody, I'm not sure we have programs with Dunwoody, but we should. Summit, Penopan Tech, you name it. And I just don't know, you know, we're a Met Council, we're not at, you know, in the education stream, but we should be partners with somebody somewhere. And I would have only imagined that even maybe the legislature could free up some money to to put sophisticated programs together that, again, were sustainable. Because I just don't know, it's really rough being a Met Council member, asking for things and people hear you and you get nodding. And I get we're down on workforce and you guys are amazing people, I'm not criticizing. But Councilmember Pacheco is right. Councilmember Liligent has brought it up in meetings as well, we all have. So when do we actually put a task force around that at Met Council to put some partners with us around it so that and and a couple Councilmembers and go, all right, let's let's set out, you know, a one, three, five, ten year plan and start figuring out how, cuz programs themselves to stand up, take a while and get accredited or whatever we're trying to do. And then other side of that, to keep Councilmember Carter's point, is to get the young people interested in the scholarships or opportunity or promise of a job or some, you know, I just think we're missing the boat on this. And the private sector, I don't know what they're doing right now, but they seem to be able to move on a dime cuz they're not government and all of that. And it and they know if it meets, if the bottom line is at risk, they will get money behind it and get it done. So I'm just, you don't need me as your cheerleader, but I'm gonna be there for you anyway because it gets frustrating. And I just want, I just wanna say this right.
No, I know, and I, we have five minutes, not now, but we'll we'll make sure, just to make sure that you we as a council have a full understanding of the amount of kind of outreach partnerships we have cuz we actually have more than I think we're all aware of. Uh for instance, tomorrow, we have over a hundred interns, I know I'm talking to them. I mean, this is a very diverse group, this is our future workforce. So we, I think we have to, and not know, but we should make sure that you're aware of what what we've got.
Yeah, we we if there's more information that you know that we don't know, that'd be great.
Yeah, okay. Uh I did say it's five minutes and I wanted to just kind of get some concluding thoughts for this uh uh important transportation thing.
I I'm just gonna make it quick. It's funny you should just say that because I was making some notes. And uh one of the things, I went to a Starkley Black College and we used to have people come from all over the country cuz they knew we were first time college attendees and we came from poor families. So certain companies would come to us because they knew we were hungry for opportunities. And so how HBCUs, how much are we reaching down to say, these are criminal justice majors, these are police science majors, we're gonna offer them maybe some scholarship money or whatever to try to get a tie-in, so that when they graduate, they're looking this way, things like that. So you have to, you know, it's just like uh if you have to put some seeds out and not all those seeds are gonna sprout. But if you're not putting any seeds out and you're saying, well, we didn't get anything, of course. So uh I think you you need to think outside the box. Uh I what I was gonna do is meet separately with uh Morales and uh talk to him about some of the others. But we're all kinda saying similar things. And so maybe we need a task force. Uh this, you know, I don't know if it has to be like a formal committee or anything. And just kinda like the, everybody kinda like barn raising approach. Everybody chip in, put their ideas in and put whatever time they can put in to try to, you know, raise those numbers.
And I really appreciate that. And I and I and I not to at all say that's not worthy of additional conversation and consideration and 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 for some of those ideas, and I'm sure Chief Morales would would appreciate it. I'm trying to just conclude on the transit advancement policy and I know workforce is really important.
Yeah, yeah.
It's huge.
So I it's not.
I wasn't even gonna bring it up.
Not not putting anything against that, it's really important. And transit advancement policy is in itself a kind of an overall thought. So uh just as a way to kind of finish, Councilmember Barber, do you have any concluding thoughts that you'd like to give on transit advancement policy? Nothing against workforce, which is part of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think the workforce stuff will be great and great to see the history that we have setting up programs with some of the technical colleges. So I think it's a good topic. But um I just wanna thank everyone for this conversation. This is something we've been trying to figure out how to operationalize for for a little while. And with these big decisions coming up, it was really important for this group here to get our feedback and hear what we're saying um and to hear it from everybody. So um I really appreciate of of all the comments and the great discussion. Uh the goal of this policy isn't to make decisions um easy to make. It is to help provide a framework to make good decisions. And so um the only way we can do that is with active participation like we had today. So as we continue to evolve these through the summer and look at the sales tax policy and all these other pieces that we talked about, you know, please continue to be engaged, please reach out with questions and comments. If you have thoughts on your drive home tonight or wake up tomorrow morning with a brilliant idea, please relay it to everybody. Because um I think the the more we all come together and come up with a collective solution for how we do this, I don't know just, I guess, it will move forward. So, thank you.
Yeah, and thanks for your work, thanks for everybody's work on this issue. This is not the uh, it's not the beginning, but it's not the end of uh the transit advancement conversation. Uh but it is pretty remarkable how daunting it is that we've got in front of us. So Leslie, Nick, Charles, thank you and thank you all, I appreciate it. Uh this meeting's adjourned, but we'll see it soon. And although this is a special meeting, I know we're not having a meeting on June nineteenth and we're not having a meeting on July third, so you get a few Wednesdays off.